Order at 7:03 PM, December 15th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Street. Commissioner Hall.
We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is prayer and pledge. Mr. Butler, would you say the prayer for us, please?
Lord, we remain today to take matters of business. God our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being the source of guidance today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number four is approval of the agenda and executive session announcements.
Mayor, I'd like to add new business item 10F to review the repeal of or appeal of Resolution Number 71-22 from the Planning Commission, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fairview, Tennessee approving the site plan for Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer Map 42GA Parcel for property owners Maryland in Holder Trust. Add that to 10F, please.
Okay, we've asked, we've been asked to add 10F. Is there any discussion on that?
I would like to, I would like to separate the annexation and the zoning on Resolution 40-22.
I think procedurally. I think you may be talking about something else, but procedurally, we probably should take action on the first motion to amend the agenda if there's a second, and then if there's any further amendments, we can, that can be a separate motion.
Okay, is there any discussion on the Cheer Gym?
Needs to be a second on adding the Cheer.
A second, okay.
And another motion on amending the agenda to add that, and if there's before the amendment, before the agenda is amended, Ms. Fisher Street, then you can talk about what you would like to do to the agenda, okay?
Okay, so we're going to ask for a roll call on the motion for the Cheer Gym.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Okay, so before you approve the agenda, if Ms. Fisher Street had another item, then now's the time to make that motion.
So I would like to split the Resolution 40, 2022 for the annexation and the zoning. I would like to make those two separate, two separate sections.
Are you making a motion to do that?
Yes, sorry.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? Ms. Mangram, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
That motion failed, and you still need a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Ms. Mangram.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Item number five is public hearings. We will have, the public hearings will be with items. Number six, citizens' comments. Ms. Mangram, are there any citizens' comments tonight?
Yes, first is Julie Fisher.
I would please ask that everyone speaking to us in citizens' comments be kind and respectful.
My name is Julie Fisher. I live at 7276 Northwest Highway. I stand here tonight before a newly elected Board of Commissioners, a Board of Commissioners that I pray will act ethically and selflessly to represent the citizens of Fairview. With that said, I would like to request that Board of Commissioner Butler recuse himself from the vote tonight and on future votes on item B under New Business Resolution 40-22, a resolution calling for the rezoning to R20 zoning for Woodwick Phase Two Northwest Highway, 5.3 acres, map 21, parcel 56, owner Candlewood Cove LLC, on the grounds that the piece of property in question was sold to the developer by Jingo Building Group LLC, for which Mr. Butler is the sole member. I would also request that Mayor Anderson recuse herself from the vote as she recently accepted a $1,600 donation to her mayoral campaign from the owner of Candlewood Cove LLC. While these actions may not be illegal, I do feel that they are unethical for this committee to do. I believe this is to be, I believe this to be a reasonable request, given the circumstances from which I just shared with this committee. Thank you.
Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Wilson Mobley at 7303 Cox Run Court. I have a quick question. Are we able to comment later on? Is, are these public hearings today? No, so just comments are now, is that correct?
When, when new business is heard, the first reading does not have a public hearing. When it goes to a second reading, the public hearing will be before the second.
So tonight, these are not public hearings?
No.
Okay, gotcha. It's just the discussion to move it to that, okay. First off, I just want to go back to your discussion about city, the city mayor search. One of the things.
City manager.
City manager, thank you. The, one of the things that occurred to me is, I know that you had about 10 to 15 citizens that were helpful in the last, Mr. Butler talked about that, that they went through and reviewed some of the qualifications, some of those who applied. Just, I was just thinking, it might be a good idea to find out from citizens what they would like in a city manager, and this is the reason why. I feel that our last city manager, although he was here for quite a while, if you did poll citizens in this town, there would be major concerns, such as city manager that we had previously wasn't necessarily a down-the-middle kind of person. So there was a lot of leaning more towards one way, which was extreme development, and not so much of both ways. So a good city manager really needs to be right down the middle and just be extremely fair and listen to all sides. I also feel that a city manager needs to make sure that they are extremely humble and realize that when there are mistakes made or things need to be reevaluated, new information needs to be looked at, that that is an okay thing. Because in this tiny town that we have, this growing all the time, everyone knows everyone. So it is essential to make sure that every decision that's made, no one is gaining and no one's losing, that it's a win-win. I also, I am, I'm a person who, in this situation, if I was to ever fill one of these seats, I am one of those people that I'm all about. It would be all, I have nothing to win, but everything to lose. And the decisions that are being made, they are affecting people like me. We have to definitely make sure that that city manager holds qualifications that are accessibility. They need to be a very empathetic person. They need to be able to see what is going to help in all of the folks that are involved. Regarding the development that's coming up for discussion, I'm wondering if the Planning Commission did look at a plan. That particular, I know that we, we do want to make sure that the plans that are put forth are not going to have environmental damage that is caused from the development that goes in. So I know that you're discussing it more tonight, and I will really hope that as you discuss it, we'll consider if a plan was actually presented. I know that if it's not a pod, then a plan wouldn't necessarily have to be presented, but I do think that something, as a new board, needs to change. There needs to be something further to show what are the intentions, because builders and developers are fantastic, I have many in my family, but we do have to show how it's going to responsibly work within this community, and again, go back to everyone wins. Thank you, thanks.
Next, we have Shannon Crutcher.
Shannon Crutcher, 7120 New Hope Road. Mayor, Commissioners, I have sat where you're sitting in the, in the process of hiring a city manager, and I don't envy the decisions you have to make going forward here the next, next month or two. Let me say this, Ms. Mobley just used some words, humble, empathetic, and qualified. I can't think of another person that's sitting here tonight that is more humble, empathetic, and qualified than Tom Darty to be our next city manager. You know, we can, we can have a search, and that's fine. I think that at the end of that search, what you'll find is that Tom Darty is the right person for this job. You've had change on this board, you've got a new mayor, you've got two new commissioners, about to have a third new commissioner. You've had some drama, and the thing that I think and submit that you need the most is a steady hand and some consistency in that role. Tom Darty can bring that. I have worked here for the past eight years as a public servant. I have watched employees come and go. The employees that are here trust in Tom Darty. The employees that are here do not need more drama. The employees that are here do not need more change, they need consistency. The past two or three weeks, there has been a completely different environment in this building than what I have seen in a long time. And I would encourage you to forego any prolonged search, forego any more uncertainty, and, and hire Tom Darty as your next city manager.
Anyone, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions, city events.
Have some events. Holiday Wonders Light Show, it runs from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, beginning tonight and ending after December 23rd show. It includes a free visit to Santa's workshop with refresh, refreshments and pictures with Santa. There are a few free tickets left, and the last day to pick up free tickets is tomorrow, December 16th. The Christmas Parade Floats will be showcased in the Sunday, December 18th show. We're offering Christmas tree disposal at Bowie Park from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM on December 26th through January 31st. Also, you can dispose of your tree at Fairview Convenience Center, which is open from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Richard wanted me to tell you that the city is planning 15 events for 2023, which will be announced in coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly, monthly reports. A, fire report. Nice to have you here, Chief Hughes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. For, this is a report for the month of November. In the month of November, we ran 130 emergency calls, which is a high number for us this year. We've only had one other month that's been close to that, so for the year, our call volume has been down a little, but it's picked up the last two months. This month, we're running, we're going to beat last year's, not, not that that's a goal, but usually when we're running calls, it's a bad day for other people. So we like to see our call volume down, but that's not been the case this month or last month. For November, we had 16 overlapping incidents. Again, that's when one crew is out on a call, we get a call for another emergency, so we're running two calls at one time, sometimes it's three calls at one time. We had five automatic mutual aid to surrounding fire departments outside of the city limits. We had 12 incidents last month that a fire had to be extinguished. That was up from what we normally see. We had one motor vehicle collision that resulted in the use of hydraulic rescue tools to remove entrapped patients. We removed one, and there was a fatality involved in that one. Our stats for this, for November, dispatch to arrival time on scene was five minutes and 25 seconds, and the average operating time on scene was 16 minutes and 57 seconds. When we have fires and wrecks, that number's going to, going to rise, the average on-scene time. I'd like to remind citizens that if they do need smoke detectors, call the fire department, we're still part of the state grant. We have smoke detectors that we can install in your homes. Just call, we'll set up a time, crew will come out and install those for you. This is just the breakdown of, of our call volume for the month. Again, we're running pretty low for medical calls, a 70% of the call volume. We're normally running 75 to 78%. We had more fires this time, so that's going to bring that percentage down. Next one is going to be the heat map. You can see it's, it's a little more red than it has been in the past, right around the station and going out, but the Highway 96 corridor is continuing to increase in color, which means we're running more and more calls out on that end of town. Next slide. We did 414 hours of training in the month of November. This is the breakdown of the training we did for the month. We usually run somewhere in the 400 to 500 range of training hours per month for the fire department. Next slide. This is just some pictures. We had extrication training again this month because we had some new hires. Those are some of the fires that we were on and some training we're doing. We have a new firefighter that came on with us late November. He's been here about a month. He's from Pine Bluff, Arkansas. He worked for the Pine Bluff, Arkansas Fire Department for three years. What, with our last hiring, he interviewed, interviewed really well. It's, his name is Kenneth Henderson, and he is on sea shift, and has moved here to the middle Tennessee area, so any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Next item, 8B, police report. Nice to have you here, Chief Humphries.
Glad to be here. Good afternoon. We'll give you a quick snapshot, this is just our personnel report. We're staffed last month at 23, we're up to 24 now. We just had a couple of new hires, I'll discuss it in a later slide. Overtime for the month went from 15 hours previously to 55. That fluctuates often with court. If we do have some people leave in the time to get new hires, we have some overtime from guys having to pull those shifts. And then our training hours, so we're 428 last month, down to 312 this previous month, and that again, when we lose staff, we, we don't get to the training that we need to those months when we're occupied with normal duties. Next slide. Just our operational report, just a monthly comparison, and we talk about calls of service and self-initiated calls of service, or when those calls come in through our dispatch center, and then self-initiated is anything the guys get out and are proactively doing, if they're working speeding or things like that. The November month, we were 821, down a little bit from October, 892, but that's consistent, generally around that range each month. Next slide. Activity, we take out just a few of the more serious topics. We have tons of categories in that, but we pull out the domestic DUI, drug charges and theft, arrest for the month, we're 60, down just a little bit. Domestic's up with, by two. DUI stayed the same. Drug charges were down slightly, and that again, is caused when we lose a little staff, the proactivity slows down because we're, we're having to answer calls and not have that extra personnel to do that. Thieves were about consistent from two to three. Citations for the month, 76, the previous month, 82. And then our traffic accidents were 24 for the month, 21 property damage, and three injuries. I, I think if people are watching this, they do know there was a fatality. The only reason we didn't report that is if it's on a major thoroughfare, 100 or 96, THP works that. Their reconstructionists are, are unbelievable, and we turn that over to them to kind of do a more thorough job. And then the last slide. We are excited to announce that this Saturday is our annual Shop with a Cop program that we're super stoked about. This year, with the previous years, the fire department, the street department, Public Works, they'll be collaborating with us, provide breakfast. Kicks off at 7:00 AM, there's the fire department. We do it in three waves, because you'll see we have 33 children, that we were able to come up with $300 each. So excited about that. Yeah, that, that's always a good thing. And then last, we have two new hires, Luke Blair and Daniel Floyd. They are beginning their training phase, and we look forward to their services at City Fairview. Any questions?
Item 8C, city manager report. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Along with day-to-day operations, we have focused our energy on researching current projects and future needs. Special, special attention has gone to projects involving the bond issue and ARPA funds for several reasons, mainly timing. We've got, I just made a list of projects we have going on. This is not all-inclusive, but police has firing range and training facility, that's coming out of bond funds, that's in a planning stage. We're in the process of relocating, relocating the impound lot, and that's coming out of operating, and that's just, that's going to be done here shortly. And then the fire department, they, they're, have a fire training tower going in out of the bond money. It's already started. They're also having EMS living quarters and fire classroom remodel, that's coming out of the bond, that's already started. We're also having parking lot expansion, that's coming out of the bond. We're in the final stages of planning on that. Relocation of a fire hydrant, which you wouldn't think that's a project, but it is. It's coming out of operating account, final stages of planning. Let's see, planning and engineering, there's a lot going on. We're looking at two purchases of property out of the bond. I want to give a, talk about the zoning ordinance that the planning and engineering department has just killed it on. That's not even any money other than staff expenses, but it's, it's a big project. We're also looking at the Greenway from city center to Shelter, Shelter City, K-Talk, Shelter Two in the park. We're also looking at Northwest Highway 96 intersection and Northwest, Northwest built out. We're in the final stages of planning on that, that'll be coming out of the bond money. We're looking at Chester Road and 100 intersection, and Chester Road build out, that's out of the bond, planning stage. We're also looking at Sutton Place, Covert Replacements, that's coming out of the ARPA funds, that's in the planning stage. And the Biggie Park Playground, final stages of completion, that's coming out of the bond. And then we've got several park projects, I've got to get with Keith and finalize on, on the total funding, but there's about 12, 12 smaller projects in the park. And then Public Works, they don't have any super projects going on right now, but they're helping with a lot of the, a lot of them, like in the impound lot and the parking lot expansion and then a couple other things. But you know, they've been busy doing Holiday Wonders Traffic Control, appreciate nobody running them over. We've got tree cleanup after the storms we've had, they're doing leaf pickup. They've got the east side of town complete, street patching, and they used approximately 10 tons of hot mix. Then, and they also have been busy cleaning out storm drains. Two other things I wanted to get you, I just received a draft of the audit, and it is clean once again, I'm very happy about that. I have, hopefully they will be out to present the audit to you at one of the meetings in January. It's got one contract to have the audit presented to the state comptroller by December 31st. So, so hopefully just as soon as that's completed, I'll have them come out and present that to you. I've also received from MTS, we do this about every 10 years, the municipal code update, and they have that to us for review. I'm going to get that out to staff, we'll start reviewing it, and then we should have that as well. I just want to give a big thank you out to staff and to those that have been extremely valuable during this transition period. I cannot say enough how much I enjoy working with you guys and gals, and thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Item number nine, consent agenda. Minutes from Board of Commissioner meeting, December 1st, 2022.
I approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, Ms. Mangram, please.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Item number 10, new business, a res, item A, 10A, Resolution 39-22, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners appointing a vice mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brandon Butler for the vice mayor position.
Any discussion about that? Hearing none. Ms. Mangram, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Nay.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item 10B, Resolution 40-22, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview with RS20 zoning by owner consent and approving a plan of services. Woodwick Phase Two Northwest Highway, 5.38 acres, map 021, parcel 056.00, owner Candlewood
I'm going to make a motion to approve because this is only setting a public hearing right now. There's no action being taken other than a public hearing being set.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, just clarification, I, I have no current ownership interest in this property, no future ownership interest in the property, no current financial interest, and no future financial interest despite Ms. Fisher's continued attacks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have something to say about the property, too. This property, if we annex this into the city, there's two 10-acre parcel, or there's a five-acre parcel and a 10-acre parcel on each side of it that will become a donut hole, and Tennessee is not in favor of, they're, they're not fond of donut holes. And that's on their annexation packet that you can find on the internet. And this has already created a humongous donut hole right in the middle of this subdivision. Well, obviously, right here, there's going to be two donut holes instead of just one, and then the same, the two subdivisions or developments beside it have also created a major donut hole within the middle of Northwest Highway. And that can be difficult for people that are annexed and people that aren't annexed, it's difficult to know who can do what, and it creates confusion.
Now, this property is in the municipal growth area, in the municipal growth boundary for Williamson County for projected future growth of the City of Fairview, and matches the 2040 plan that the Planning Commission sent with a favorable recommendation of unanimous 9-0 vote.
If I'm not mistaken, the, is this considered medium density? Is it R20? In the 2040 plan, there is a section that states that RS40 and RS20 can be medium-density recommendations for the area. So one-acre lots could also be a recommendation. for the area. So one-acre lots could also be a recommendation.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second. Ms. Mangram, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Item 10C, Resolution 41-22, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee to approve a bid from Playground Plastics for the purchase of and engraving of fence pickets, other required physical elements, and freight for all components of the fence to be installed surrounding Treehouse Playground at Bowie Park, sorry, Bowie Nature Park. Move for approval. Any discussion?
Mayor, just a couple of questions. Do we remember how many pickets we sold? Was it like 160 or so? Any chance you have that number off the top of your head? I want to say it was around 160, which would be like 8,000 go towards you. Go towards you. And so labor insulation's on this. We talked about that before. So when we get the material, will we have to get a labor bid and then come back and vote for labor? I guess trying to understand timing.
I believe Mr. Collins was in discussion on the company. I'm still in the process of, I'm looking at the material. If not, I'll have to check out the stand, which is, it's a very, very important part.
Awesome, yeah. Do you know anything about the monument sign, the donor sign, the entrance sign that they were designing, the status of it?
That's in some of those 12 park projects that I'm still researching.
Understood. That's what I was gonna, and then the pike benches, that's all I had. Just checking on that. I know you're drinking from the hose right now. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second. Ms. Mangram, roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Item 10D, Discuss and/or take action on vacant Commissioner's seat.
Motion to defer, motion to defer this item to the next meeting.
Second.
Sorry.
Take it. We have first and a second. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please, Ms. Mangram.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
This item's deferred. Item 10E, Discuss and/or take action on City Manager position. I'd like to make a motion for us to approve City Manager, interim City Manager, Tom Darty to the full-time City Manager of the City of Fairview.
Second. And I will explain why. Because I know what he's capable of. I hired him to start with. He's part of the reason we're where we're at financially. And as far as a nice guy, you're not gonna meet a better nice guy than that guy right there. He meets all the qualifications as far as I'm concerned.
I have worked closely with Mr. Tom Darty for the past three weeks. I have never met a more honest, fair, compassionate man in my life. He, the staff loves him. He is concerned about our staff. He has three generations lived in this community. He loves this community and has worked his fingers to the bone the last few weeks to make sure that we have everything we need. I, I don't know of a better person to have this position. He's our Assistant City Manager now. He has handled every different situation, finance, City Manager, IT, all the different situations here. He has handled with just grace and honesty and integrity. I, I mean, I could say many more things, but this, I, I just believe he is the person we need moving forward.
Any discussion?
My only discussion. I was not prepared to come to vote on, on hiring a City Manager. I love Mr. Darty. So if I don't vote, yes, it is not in any way saying I don't think you're qualified or prepared for it. I just, there's a lot to swallow right away. I was hoping we'd get some applications and love to see their application in there, but that's just my only feedback.
Only thing I'd like to add to that, I've seen Mr. Darty bring us through some tough times. We've stated many a time, when we walked into this building here from a previous City Manager's position of the past, we had $400 left to run this city on. Tom and I, we scratched our heads every day wanting to know how much money come into this building from different areas of resource we had. And as far as I'm concerned, that's where we are at today. He has brought us to this point where we are today. And with his ability that he went to, a solid year of classes, he's not only just a CFO, he's a certified municipal, CMFO, right? I'll get it right in a minute. He went and passed it with flying colors. And I know the ability that this man has. And when Judge Crusher came up a while ago, that's the first that I had even thought about the possibility of Tom going ahead and being hired. So that's the reason I seconded the motion. And like I said, I don't think anybody is better qualified than the situations that we are in today than Tom Darty to handle those situations.
I hate to say that. I've known him for quite a while, even with the Soccer Association out here. He's, I mean, he's been as nice as could be to everyone. Team players, parents, everyone that you could think of. And I've been talking to him also the last few weeks and he's dedicated. His hours are unbelievable right now of what he's trying to do to keep the city going. So I think he is, I think he's a good fit because he knows where we are right now and he knows where we need to go. And getting someone else new right now would, they would be looking at everything and probably not have a clue. It would take a lot to get them up and go into where we need them to be.
Ms. Mangram, roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Abstain.
Mr. Fisher Street.
Aye.
Mayor, so Mr. Darty's been selected as the new City Manager for Fairview. What we will do is, there needs to be a contract between the city and Mr. Darty. So we will draft one for you to review, Mayor, and, and also for Mr. Darty to review. And it's gonna be subject to this board's vote to approve the terms of it. But we will, I welcome any input, any of you have, if you want to email me. But I'm gonna, we'll draft basically a standard contract and then I would, and we'll let Mayor Anderson tell us if those terms are acceptable before we present it to Mr. Darty. We'll go from there.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Butler, would you read item 10F for us, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, Vice Mayor Butler, sorry.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday night's Planning Commission meeting, this, this agenda item was on it. It was a four-to-four tie. We got a note from staff today that Tennessee Code of Annuit does allow for the appeal or review from the board standpoint. And so we were submitted to this. And so this is a business item and I think that everyone was, was present at the meeting Tuesday night. So hopefully you're familiar with it. But I'll read the entire resolution, which is lengthy. So, "A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, approving the site plan for the Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer, MAP 42 GA, parcel four, property owners Maryland and Holder Trusts. Whereas Mr. Jim Lukens, Lukens Engineering Consultants, engineer for Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer, is requesting approval of site plan. The staff comments are attached as Exhibit PC 7122A. Now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, as allows. City Fairview Planning Commission hereby approves or denies this request with the following conditions. Approval of variance pursuant to the City of Fairview zoning ordinance 813.7 sidewalk requirement for portions of sidewalk along State Route 100. Approval of variance pursuant to the City of Fairview Design Review Manual, Section 2104 Architectural Character. Any activity within TVA easement must be reviewed and approved for a right-of-way use request through TVA to determine that use of easement is compatible. All correspondence and approval shall be complete prior to the pre-construction conference. Site plan approval shall be pending based on Board of Zoning Appeal's decision on conditional use permit of entertainment and amusement services limited within CG District. All remaining staff comments to be addressed and approved by staff prior to pre-construction conference. Plans set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to the pre-construction meeting." I'll make a motion to approve for discussion. So the meeting on Tuesday night, make sure I gather my notes here. The most discussed item was the sidewalk placement along Highway 100. So this parcel sits right as the four-lane merges into two, right before the Cox Pike Turn Signal, right after Thriving Financial, and loops around to Adams Drive. And one of the, our requirements would request sidewalks be installed along that State Route 100 route there. And so the discussion at the Planning Commission, there were some members who felt that we should not give the variance request which was in the resolution to allow them to not install those sidewalks. And in lieu of installing sidewalks, they pay a fee. And Micah stopped me anytime I say anything wrong. There's an option to pay a fee. So they would pay into the sidewalk fee or fund to where we would receive those funds, where we could use those funds towards a public sidewalk in another location at another time. And so that was the biggest hiccup. When, I've been at the site, went again today, just to walk it again. It's right where those sidewalks are shown on the plat. And I have a plat. I can pass it down to you guys if you want, if you want to see it again. But the electric, the middle Tennessee electric poles run right down 100 right there. And so it would be very difficult to put that sidewalk there. The way the topography lays, the transition from the sidewalk up into the building, it didn't have, it wouldn't have connectivity. And then right there where it's a four-lane coming to a two-lane, there's probably gonna be future, future expansion from the state route. So if they put sidewalks in, there's a great opportunity. It's probably gonna be removed. The, the other variance was the architectural character was the other variance that was being requested. Right now it reads a 70% brick. Traditionally, on what has been approved of the Planning Commission recently, has allowed for more of a 70% masonry. Our new, our new zoning ordinance goes toward, speaks towards that, correct, Micah? More of a, a brick and stone combo. And so this building has a combination of brick and stone on the exterior elevation. And so it is their right to bring it back for the board to review and discuss and to potentially approve it. And so we added it tonight to have this additional discussion and, and get feedback.
I think there was a second. Did you say?
I second it.
I thought, I thought I heard that. Yes, ma'am.
I, I did. I second it. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
I just have one question. Where is the sidewalk phone kept at? I mean, what bank of counties it kept in?
Okay. I was just curious. Because I know we've had some in the past. I'm just curious where it was put in escrow or whatever. Okay. Thanks.
I know.
Sorry, Mayor. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Nope. You got it. Your floor.
I just, I'm really excited about this project. I voted yes on the Planning Commission for this. And, you know, we have a lot of children out here that travel all the way to Cool Springs to let it shine. And, you know, to have that in our community, I think a lot of the children and the, the families would really enjoy being able just to, you know, have this cheer gym in our own community instead of having to travel so far with their children. So I'm, I'm excited about the project myself.
One thing I did not mention that, we have staff, our engineer in our, in our planning department here tonight for any questions. The engineer for the applicant is here, the applicant is here. One thing I didn't, I didn't say Tuesday night that I wish I would've said is the applicant is a lifelong resident of Fairview and a local teacher and a love for kids. And she reached out to me probably three, two or three years ago to ask about this. And I thought she was crazy. It would never come to fruition. And here it is. And I am really excited. I think it would be a huge success. And so I, I was of a yes vote on Tuesday night.
Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Mangram, please.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher Street.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Item number 11, Communication from Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolute congratulations, Mr. Darty. And again, I want to reiterate, I don't think that you cannot capture it. That's why abstaining is just, I am very excited for Fairview. I think it's a great thing. So congratulations and thank you for your continued service and helping us get through this and working so hard right now. So thank you. Thank you to the staff, the entire staff for another great year. We continue to make great forwards and strides. And Merry Christmas. And thank you to the new board and Merry Christmas to all.
I stand corrected again. I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor. I'm gonna have to get used to that. So Commissioner Fisher Street.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to listen. This is what we need, the people to speak, to tell us what they want. Because remember, we're here for you. We want to know what you want. So please, please keep coming. And thank you for everything. And I'm glad Tom is gonna be able to get some stress off of him.
Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, congratulations. And I feel that I, I know everybody refers to you as Mr. Darty, but I, I've known you too many years for Tom. So congratulations. And I know you'll do a great job for the city. The employees I know are gonna be fantastic under you. They're gonna work that much harder. I can tell already. Anyway, I want to thank you for allowing Chief Scott Hughes and Chief Zach Humphreys to come in and give us their report. This was one of the requests that I had from several citizens that they'd like to see our, doesn't have to be the chief every time. It can be one of your captains or whoever you would like to designate for that. So, but I do thank y'all. Thanks for coming out, everybody, and Merry Christmas.
Well, I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everyone. And let's see, Happy New Year, I guess, because we will meet after the New Year. I am extremely excited. I've worked closely with Tom for the last several weeks. And man, what a wonderful human being. This city is so blessed to have him. And if you don't know him, please get to know him because he's, he's, he's the best. Also, congratulations to Mr. Butler for becoming Vice Mayor. Yes. And I welcome the new officers. I look forward to meeting them at the Police Department. Let's just make sure that we keep our city beautiful and let's just help pick up trash and not throw it out. So, and thank you all for coming. Like Leslie said, this is, you know, we, we want to hear from the community. So that's important to us. Thank you. And I, item number 12, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving.
We're adjourned. Thank you.